Welcome to this morning's special session with RT's Jackie Hurley. And so this session is especially part of our fourth year Broadcast Week modules and MA TV modules. But there may be a few other randomers from the program here as well. So, so again, really happy to welcome Jackie here. And again, this is Jackie's fourth year. Would you believe Jackie as adjunct professor in sports journalism? And she's been a brilliant supporter of journalism here in UL in that time. A tiny bit of background for our international students, a few of whom are joining us today. So after playing sport at the highest level herself, Jackie's represented Ireland in basketball and played camogie for Cork. Jackie established herself as one of the best known voices and faces in RT sports. For me, she's the best anchor by a long way just now, actually. But and I think a lot of you will kind of share that, that sense of how good she is. She took over the RT's flagship show, Sunday Sports on Radio One in 2009. She was the first ever female anchor in that show's history. That's one of the biggest, that, sorry, it's the biggest radio sports show. I'm right there, Jackie, isn't it? It definitely gets the most listeners. And she's been probably, well, she's very much the face of sport in RT at the moment. She's anchored several World Cups, football and rugby, I think, certainly big rugby events. The summer, winter Olympics, everything in between. And she's just been appointed as the new anchor on the Sunday game. Again, kind of one of the most coveted and high profile roles in RT sports. So today, I think she's going to be talking about commentating for TV sports and anchoring for live and pre-recorded sports. So again, forty five minutes session, sharp and time at the end for questions. And I'm sure with the impending live TV news days coming up, the presenters and sports editors and sports cars and reporters will have lots that you want to ask Jackie about. So, so hands up at any point you have a question. And I think, I suppose, you can leave the cameras off for the moment, but just, and questions in the chat as well, or put the hands, the hand up if you want to come in at any stage and I'll keep an eye, okay? So over to you, Jackie.
Perfect. Thanks a million, Fergal. Yeah, look, great to be here, guys. It's hard to believe it's been four years. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time getting to chat, to classes over the years. And what I would say is this is a very relaxed environment. Like, I'm certainly not coming on here to lecture anybody and tell them this is the only way to do it. There is loads of different ways to cut out your own career in this. So as Fergal says, feel free to jump in if there's something I say and you want to ask something immediately. Just throw up the hand or throw it into the chat box and I'll do it. Otherwise, we'll do some questions afterwards. I'll keep this nice and relaxed. And basically, Fergal, if you want to flick on there, what I'm going to kind of cover today essentially is, I suppose, just kind of a sense of my journey, like Fergal has kind of pinpointed sort of my milestones along the way. I'll sort of talk you through like how I kind of got to where I am and maybe how you guys can kind of mirror that path. And then how you kind of navigate your own, what it is you want to do. And a few tips on how to get there, just a few small things that for me are kind of essential to making the best out of it. So throw me on to the next slide there, Fergal. And for me, this is kind of how it started out, right? So I went to college in Mary I, not far from where you guys are there now. I did the BA in English and Media Communications at Mary I, absolutely loved the course. It was brilliant. The reason that I chose it was because like the course that you guys are doing, it was really practical. And I wanted to get a sense of, there's lots of jobs where you can go and you can study in college and you can spend four years learning, but you don't actually get your hands on the ground and do anything. Whereas in Mary I and in UL, there are courses that actually really equip you to work as a journalist. So I wanted to do that. We were very lucky that we had a college radio station there called Wired FM. And literally on my first day, I walked in and said, what can I do? How do I volunteer? What's there? And I got to present for a sports show on that radio station, like when I was in college, which was just such valuable experience. And I'd recommend that if any of you do get a chance to do college radio, community radio, anything like that, even while you're in college, it's a brilliant, brilliant way of just gathering experience. Because it's not easy to just walk into any radio station and say, hire me now. But community radio are always looking for volunteers and same with college radio. I was really lucky that when I was in my third year in college, I got to do an internship in Mississippi. I was the population of Irish people there of about one, I would say. But it just, my uncle actually knew the sports director at a local TV station there. And I just decided that that would be a better option for me. At the time, I had actually been offered a internship at InStyle magazine in New York as well. And I thought, yeah, look, that would be a great opportunity for me. But I kind of felt like I might end up making tea, whereas I knew if I went to somewhere, a small market television station, I would do loads of jobs. So I went there, I ran auto queue, I did copy scripts for news editors and like did the weather ticker while I was there, literally did every single job. And by the time I left after a year, I was actually on air there. So that was definitely for me where the main experience came from, if you want to move it on there, Fergal. So for me, the next stop then was local radio in Limerick. Some of you might recognize Miren O'Connell there in the picture with me, who presents Ireland AM on Virgin Media now. We started our careers together in Live 95, basically doing what we call the shadow crew, driving those jeeps around town, doing traffic reports. They gave us a show on a Saturday night called The Hot Mix, which was probably the greatest mistake of their lives. Because we just thought it was a time to get into a booth and have the absolute crack. But I think what they really wanted to do was just allow us to kind of grow and share our own personalities while we were there. I absolutely loved it. And for me, that was the best grounding of just, I suppose, learning the tricks and the trades. Because in local radio, you've got a lot of people who maybe have been there for a very long time and they're really brilliant at what they do. There's loads of people you can really learn those tricks from. But equally, there's a lot of people who are starting out and it's good to have a good buzz of an environment around where everybody's learning together. And that's certainly the way me and Miren were. And we're still great mates today. We still get to hang out in Dublin all the time and it's brilliant to see her career going so well as well. So after that, as you'll see on the next slide, I applied for a job in RTE as a contributor on this show called TTV. I don't know if anybody remembers, but like, you're all a lot younger than me, I'm sure. But there was this show called TTV and before it, they basically had this slot where you could talk about sports, talk about celebrity gossip, talk about fashion, whatever it was. I applied for a job to talk about sport. I had literally five minutes of fame on a Monday evening, talking about the sport on the weekend. While I was there, I applied for a job in production in sport, met Ryle Nugent and said, look, I'll do anything. I, you know, I'll be a runner, I'll be a researcher, I'll be absolutely anything that you want me to be. And he gave me a job in production. About a year later, I ended up at the Heineken Cup final, working, doing match reports for Monsters. So it just shows like how persistence, going and asking and putting yourself out there to do absolutely anything will eventually lead you down a path where you get opportunities like what I did for something like that. So on to the next phase of it all then, I guess, this is a sense of what I did. Like, so you might think like it's really linear and oh, to get to where you are, I need to do X, Y, Z or whatever. But this will give you a sense of, like, when I first moved to Dublin, I literally had that five minute job. I didn't have anything else. So I went and got a job with a PR agency, doing a bit of event management. I worked in production. So if you ever watch like the Sunday game or you might watch, you know, let's say Match of the Day or whatever in the UK or Against the Head, I used to do a lot of those analysis and the teasers and the closers and all that stuff. That was my job. So I worked in production for a couple of years before I ever got on air. Then I became a bulletin reader. I worked with Q102 a little bit. I obviously had an English degree, so I was doing a bit of substitute teaching in Dublin as well. I was working as a voiceover artist. I still do a little bit of that. And then obviously match reports as well. But so that'll just give you a sense that, again, it's not linear. It's never like I'm going to walk in the door and get a presenter's job. It's let's try to be as open minded as you possibly can, take a load of different jobs. Because all of those bits of experience will actually help you in the long run when it comes to doing what I do now. So after that, you can push that on there again, Fergal. There you go. My big break, I guess, is what I probably call it now. Fergal touched on it. Sunday Sport to me is without a shadow of a doubt the biggest thing that has ever happened to me in my career. Because I went from reading four minute sports bulletins to presenting a four hour live unscripted show that was the biggest show in Ireland. And don't even ask me why they thought it would be a great idea to stick a, first of all, the first ever woman, which I didn't even realise at the time until a journalist said it to me. But also, I was the youngest presenter. I was only twenty five. I was more worried about being given such an iconic show at such a young age than I was about making a hames of it for all womankind. But I got to do it for fourteen years and it was the biggest learning curve of my life. Because presenting a live unscripted show, you just have to be able to just roll with it. And you are going to make mistakes. And something that I learned very early on in my career is that you need to be able to own up to them. Sometimes you don't get it right. And sometimes you need to just be able to say, actually, come here, that score I just gave you there two minutes ago, that was actually wrong. Here's what the score is. Sorry about that. And move on. Because people will accept mistakes. What they won't accept is people not being real and not telling them the truth, you know? So I think there's a big value in that. In RTE in general, they would really stand over that. But also, being in a show like that where you're literally thrown into such a crazy environment, you just have to live in the chaos. And like I would have had a producer in my ear saying, there's a goal here, we're going to the Gaelic grounds. And then there's been a sending off in Thurles, we're going to have to go there. And you have to just be able to listen and communicate as clearly as you possibly can. But something like Sunday Sport has taught me that now, no matter what happens on TV, and I'll go through some other experiences a little bit later on, but now, no matter what happens, I'm just ready for it. Because I've had fourteen years of madness happening on a Sunday afternoon in a brilliant way. But it has definitely set me up to be able to be much more comfortable in the chaos than I would have been fourteen years ago, that is for sure. So look, I suppose, taking the opportunities is one part, but you know, Gabrielle probably said it best when she said dreams can come true. And for me, this is what I get to do now, you know? When you look at some of those pictures there in front of you, like, you know, there's Euros in there, there's World Cups, there's Olympics, there's Six Nations, you know? If you'd have told me even three, four years ago that I would be doing all of these things, I probably wouldn't have believed you. Because I guess it's one thing to say you want to do something, it's entirely another for other people to put their faith in you and to make that happen. And I guess it's a long road to get there and there's a lot of no's. Like, I had loads of times in my career where I didn't think it was going to work out and I didn't get the jobs. And I suppose I've probably talked about the Sunday game in particular, where when it came around the first time, I didn't get it. You know, Joanne Cantwell was given the job and she's a brilliant presenter. It's nothing to do with her. But I thought that job was going to be mine and it wasn't. So it's about how you deal with that adversity and you go on a path that you never thought you were going to go on. Because after that, I went to do the soccer and, you know, I'm sitting there in studio beside, you know, Stephanie Roach and Kevin Doyle. And just, it was total dreamland for me to be able to do major tournaments like that. And then likewise with the Six Nations, working with the lads you see in the corner there with former internationals like Jamie Heaslip, Stephen Ferris and Gerry Flannery on a weekly basis is like more than what my wildest dreams would have been. I just didn't think it was possible. Likewise with the Olympics, I've done three Olympic Games now. And they never get old. It is just having a front row seat at the greatest sporting event in the world. Every four years to me is just something that every time it comes around, I put my hand up for it. Because it really is one of the greatest gigs of all time, that is for sure. So if you move that on there, Fergal, yeah, dreams definitely come true. And what I would say is go for them. Lots of questions that I get asked is TV or radio? So I guess the big questions are when you're thinking about your career, if this is something that you want to do, right? So people always say, yeah, it's a bigger audience in TV, and that is for sure. But I guess it's just what does it mean to you to work on both? So for me, working on television, there's lots more pictures, it's much more visual. So you do get an opportunity to talk to the pictures. And like, directors might often say in my ear, here, I've got a lovely shot of Bundy Aki with his baby or whatever. And you just have the ability to be able to react and use those pictures to tell people what's going on at home. The other cool thing that we have, and you see Gerry there in the picture, using technology to analyse the modern game is one of the greatest things that we have resources to. Like, we have this machine called Piero that you can basically highlight players, you can track the ball to see how far it has travelled. You can, you know, move people around in like a metaverse and, you know, actually show where they should have been. You can highlight the referee to see what the referee sees so that when he's calling plays. And to me, that's the most interesting part of the game. Like, somebody like Gerry Flannery, for instance, like, analysis to him is the most important thing of all time. He could come to me and say, I've got this four minute piece and I really want to show you. Now, you might think four minutes is a very small amount of time, but in television, when I show you our running order in a minute, it is like, that's an eternity in television. So I'd be constantly trying to say to the lads, show it to me, but do it in a snappy way. Because people who are at home, not everybody's a total rugby geek. Some people just want to be entertained, like my mom. She just wants to know, why did they win the match? Who played well and what happens next, I guess, you know? So the ability to use technology to do that is brilliant. One thing that I would say about radio, and it's something that I'm really going to miss now that I've stepped away from it. And I, I'm not going to get to be on radio anymore. The time that you get on radio to just express yourself and tell people what's happening, the ability to use the emotion and to capture what's happening in the ground and to be able to sell it to the people at home is one of the greatest privileges that you may ever know. And for any of you who work in radio or who want to work in radio, to me, it is still the closest medium you can get. Television is brilliant and everything, but it can be contrived at times because you have to hit certain measurables. And there's ad breaks and there's bits and things that you have to do. Whereas on radio, if you have ten minutes, all of that ten minutes is yours and you can take it wherever you want to go. You can develop personalities, you can get a real rapport with your guests, like, let's say with Shane McGrath, Brian Carroll in that bottom picture there. Like, we've done multiple All-Irelands together. The crack that we have off the air is, you know, we bring it on the air a lot as well. But it's just to be able to develop that rapport with people, only time can give you that. And radio, to me, will always be my first love for that reason. Because the ability that allows people to really truly be themselves in a way that television sometimes can have constraints. So I would say, if you do get a chance, do both and put your hand up for both because it's brilliant. When it comes to the audiences in TV, right, I suppose, there's a couple of key things. So if you hit the first one there, nine of the top ten most watched programmes last year were live sport. And like, that is phenomenal. Like, it is huge what live sport is delivering. And on the next one, if you push that on again there, Fergal, only the Toy Show got a bigger audience last year than live sport. And that is because people, you know, I suppose, like, look, everybody has Netflix and Disney Plus and dodgy boxes and everything else that they have now. So the only thing that people are really watching live is sport. It's the only thing that people really want to pay money for. We see it in advertising revenues. But the fact now that nine of the top ten shows are sport will tell you that that's what Irish audiences want. So that'll give you a sense of it. If you move it on to the next one, you'll see what the numbers are. And if you push that again, there you go. So All-Ireland Football Final last year after the Toy Show was the next biggest watched show. Eight hundred and seventy two thousand people is the audience. Again, huge figures for the All-Ireland hurling final. And obviously, we had a World Cup last year. I think four of the top ten programmes last year were the FIFA World Cup. So that'll tell you again, people were hugely interested in that. Even this year, again, Ireland, France and Six Nations, nearly a million people watched that. Nine hundred and ten thousand is absolutely astronomical. And they're obsessed in RTE and all television stations about what the audience share is. So it's how many people of the available audience as a percentage are watching television at the time? And our rugby coverage at the moment is delivering anywhere between seventy and seventy five percent. So if you think that of all of the people who are watching TV at the time, seventy to seventy five percent of them are watching what we're showing is absolutely huge. And to just put that in context, anything over twenty percent is seen as a massive success. So if you watch like, let's say Room to Improve or Dancing with the Stars or any of the other like entertainment shows that we do, if they got something over twenty percent, generally that is deemed as a big success. So that'll tell you seventy percent just how much sport is punching for RTE. And it's, we're seeing it every year. The trends are only going one way. I think come the Rugby World Cup this year, you'll probably get a million people watching if Ireland get to a quarter final and beyond. So yeah, the numbers are absolutely huge. So if you move that on again there, Fergal, here's a sense of, I'm just going to kind of take you through for me, kind of what a day looks like. And I'll give you a little bit of the running order and what it looks like. So we would generally get there maybe two and a half, three hours beforehand. And it's really to just get all the bits and pieces done. A lot of it is just like simple stuff, like go get your hair and makeup done. We have a production meeting. Everybody gets into position, so we get wired up, we get our talk back. Everybody checks that we can all hear each other. We'll go through our analysis with the pundits. And really, that's just to make sure that they're happy that what they're talking to on air, that they've seen it, that they've, you know, use the technology to highlight any people that they want to and that they've all seen it. And even the lads who haven't done the analysis, just that they've seen it before it goes on air, so they can react to it as well. Usually, we're on air maybe forty five minutes or an hour before kickoff. It depends on how big the game is. Sometimes it's a half an hour. If it's a, you know, let's say if it's a GAA league match, it's probably half an hour. If it's a Six Nations game, it's usually an hour. If it's a game away from home, it might be forty five minutes. But I'll show you in our running order there in a minute what it generally looks like. And we're usually on for about a half an hour after full time. So here's what the running order looks like. This is just the most recent one from our last game, which was against Italy last weekend. Now, apologies for the quality of this, it just didn't load onto the page properly. But basically, this will just give you a sense of what it looks like. So the first thing that you'll see is, okay, there's all this stuff at the top where basically it's just, you know, me saying, look, here's them arriving. Here's the fixtures, here's the table, all that kind of stuff. But one thing I want you to look at, so if you go down there to item eight, you'll see there, if you go across like kind of where it says, go down to item eight, you'll see where it says studio, and then you go across. Look at that opening chat. It's only three minutes. So people might look at television and they think, oh, listen, they're all waffling there on the side of the pitch. But that opening chat is three minutes. I've got three guests. That's basically a minute each. So you have to be incredibly diligent about talking to them before the game about what do they want to talk about, what are the key points? So let's just say if it's an Ireland rugby game and Ireland are going for a grand slam, they want to talk about that. Sometimes they want to talk about the pressure, they want to talk about the environment, whatever it is. But they've got three minutes to do that. So not only do you have to be disciplined, but they have to be incredibly disciplined to allow each other to come in so that one of them isn't hogging all the airtime. But also that they feel like they've addressed something that people at home are talking about as well, that they're not just sitting there talking shite either. Because that's kind of half of it too, that we all need to make sure we're on the same page. When you go down even, you look at where it says major calls and key players. We only have like four chats pre-match. So all of this that you're looking at in the running order, this is all what happens pre-match. So let's say in item eleven there, you see, it goes team selection, so I'll go through that. And then it goes into key players. We've only got four minutes to talk about, who do you want to talk about? So last weekend, it would have been Ross Byrne, and then it would have been Stuart McCluskey and Bundy Aki. What are they going to do there? Somebody like Craig Casey, you know, getting a first Six Nations start and maybe a bit on James Ryan as captain. But so you're saying to them again, lads, you've got four minutes, pick the people who you really want to talk about. And this is where having a good relationship with the pundits comes in handy here. Because when I know what they're going to say, I can push them to say it without it feeling like, I'm, I'm never trying to needle them. I want, I like, we want to be part of a team. I want them to look good and vice versa. So it's all about working together to make sure that we do it. And then, you know, once you come back off commercial breaks, then you're maybe talking a little bit about Italy. Even in there, you're only talking maybe two minutes about Italy. And then we get to the analysis part. And this is usually the part that excites the pundits the most. So you're trying to give them enough time where it's something like, you want to give Gerry Flannery two and a half minutes to tee up something that he has probably worked all week on and then allow the lads some time to react. And usually then, you know, even you'll see in the timings, let's say we were on air at half two last weekend. By the time we get over to the commentators, it's usually about seven minutes past, eight minutes past, something like that. Because they have to do all the anthems before they get to kickoff, which last weekend was at quarter past. So that'll give you a sense of, there's a lot in pre-match, even just when you look at that running order. Just, I suppose, for you guys to get used to it and to get a sense of, this is how much is in it. Because even when we get there on game day, all of those team arrivals, the teasers, the interviews with the coaches, they all have to be pre-recorded and then added in. So there's an awful lot that has to get done before we even get on air. And then when we get on air, it's just about being diligent and disciplined and getting through it so that we hit kickoff at the right time. And you don't suddenly see the team on the pitch and we haven't handed over to our commentators yet. So that's just to give you a sense of what that looks like. So look, happy to share any of those with you in the future. Again, if they're, you know, if you're ever looking for how those things are laid out, but I think it's always interesting to see what it looks like. So if you move that on again there, Fergal, please, here's just an idea of what the skill set is. So you can push through these, as I say them. Like, the first one is, look, just getting comfortable, reading the auto queue, simple things that should come naturally to people, but they're not always the easiest thing. But that's absolutely the biggest skill set you have to have. If you want to do this job, you need to make sure that you're comfortable speaking to people and you're speaking to the camera. The next one is being disciplined. You know, I said that there. It's making sure that you're not asking a question that takes two minutes to ask. Sometimes it's okay to just say, what did you think of the match? You know, you don't have to labour the point and try to tell everybody everything that you know at home. Sometimes it's okay to just say, come here, what do you think of that? And then let them talk. So being disciplined with it and using the time to make sure that you get the very most out of it. Being a team player and working with the pundits and the producer. Your producer is going to be in your ear, they're going to tell you what they want. To be able to listen to them, to take their feedback, but also to work with the pundits. You're not trying to nail them, you're trying to make sure that you're getting the very most out of your guests. And the only way you can do that is by working with them to know what they want to talk about and how you can best facilitate them to do that. Some of the other stuff is, I suppose, having somebody talking to you. It's not the easiest thing to get used to, but being able to talk while somebody is talking to you and knowing that there's crucial things that if they're telling you one minute left, or if they're telling you Andy Farrell is standing by, you need to go there. You need to be able to listen, you need to be able to wrap your guests if that's what happens. But you only get that by having experience. And I would say a good way of practising that is when you're doing your, your live television module and you're practising that. Maybe get a loud room, you know, pretend you're the reporter, speaking to the camera while there's lots of people talking over here. Just so that you can focus on what it's like in a crazy environment where there's mad stuff going on. But also being able to block out lots of other stuff and only taking in the crucial stuff, like somebody talking in your ear. Because if you are going to work in this job, whether it's in TV or radio, you will constantly have somebody in your ear telling you to move it on one way or the other. And then the last one really is just the ability to react to whatever is thrown at you. Because there is going to be an awful lot of crazy stuff that gets thrown at you, that is for sure. If you move it on to the next one, I'll give you some examples. Last weekend, some of you were probably watching the rugby, you probably saw it. Matt Hansen accidentally said fuck on TV, which happens, you know? And we had producers, because the world feed is rolling this interview live, we're rolling this interview live. So there's nothing we can do about it, we're in it. And you just have to have the ability to just say, sorry about that or whatever. So Claire McNamara was doing the interview, she had like four different people screaming in her ear. You have to apologise for that, you have to apologise for that. Claire eventually apologised when it came back to us in studio. We were just like, okay, Graham, look, these things happen. So it's live TV, you have to be able to react and just get on with it. If you move on to the next one there, we've had some brilliant moments in live television. So this one was at the Olympics in twenty twenty one, when Finton McCarthy and Paulo Donovan won the rowing gold medal. We did a live insert with Finton's family and his twin brother Jake, who's there in that middle picture, is also a rower and was obviously going for the Olympics and didn't make it. But he was drinking heavily while he was watching his brother winning a gold medal. And when we went live to the family, he gay-crashed his mom and dad's interview live on television and started shouting down the camera at us. And thankfully, I know him, so I was able to spot it and kind of start having the crack with him or whatever, live on air. But like, you have to be able to just roll with it. Like, having a drunk man live on the air on television is obviously not ideal circumstances. But being able to just kind of laugh and move on with it and just share the moment, like, his brother has just won an Olympic gold medal. People are much more forgiving in those circumstances than maybe they would be if it was a, you know, completely different scenario. So sometimes you get absolute TV gold and you just need to roll with it. Let them have their moment, let him do it, because he's going to go viral, he'll have the crack, the family will appreciate it and it's totally worth it. So definitely you have those. If you move on to the next one, you do also have some moments that, like for me in my career, you will never, ever forget. And for me, definitely the day Christian Eriksen collapsed on the pitch during the Euros is a day that I will never forget for the rest of my career. I was sitting in studio and it happened and I actually saw it immediately and kind of knew there was something up. But I was in studio with Liam Brady and Damien Duff and to say it hit them hard. I think I will probably never forget what Liam's face was like. I just, he was so shook. I didn't think he was going to be able to speak. Damien Duff actually left the studio in tears. He wasn't able to articulate his thoughts. And then when they told us we were going to have to come back on air and to try to fill the time while we were waiting to see what was going to happen with the match. I just thought, I actually don't even know what we're going to say here, you know? So it was just about sitting in the moment and trying to react to it in real terms. And I suppose knowing that there's lots of people at home who are watching this and who may be distressed. And there's maybe Irish families who've been through tragedy and you kind of need to be able to feel that emotion and to be able to, to just express it in a way that feels very human and not to try to over analyse it. Just like actually tell, say what you see and just tell people how you're feeling and, you know, tell them that it's not easy for the pundits in studio as well. And, you know, I suppose, send your best wishes to Christian Eriksen and to his family, but to try to do it in a way that feels sincere. And nothing trains you for that. It just doesn't, you know, sometimes you just have to react in the moment. How you feel is the only way you can handle it. And for me, it's just that raw emotion of just telling people exactly how you feel and how much this, how difficult it is. And so for me, look, live TV is all about that. It's about how you react in the moment, what you do and how you and how you get over it. But for me, definitely, if you ask me for one day in my career, that was the most difficult, absolutely no question, that day in June twenty twenty one for me was without a shadow of a doubt, the most difficult day of my career, that is for sure. So there are some times when you pinch yourself and you say, but it's worth it and this is why you do it. And for me, having a front row seat at live sporting events is the reason I do this job. It is the most rewarding job I could have ever imagined. And it's from moments like this, you know. Take the Olympics, there's nobody there. You are literally the closest thing to their family that these athletes have. And for somebody like Kelly Harrington here, like this is moments after she won an Olympic gold medal. And I know her very well and I know Bernard Dunn very well. And so I was able to, what I was doing there is showing her what the reaction was at home. There was a big screen outside her house and she had never seen it on Portland Row and to just be able to be there, to be the one that shares the event with people at home, but also shares it with her. You know, it's, I suppose it's hard to articulate why you do the job, but you do it because you love sport, you love what it means to people, you love why you do it, but to get to be able to be the one that connects her to the people at home. And then vice versa is a true privilege and and moments like that for me are what make it all worthwhile. We spent the whole day with her afterwards. We got into the bus and and all she wanted was McDonald's. So she was coming back to RTE. We threw her into the back of the bus and we were driving along and we said, come on, we'll pull in there to the into McDonald's and get her. All she wanted was a Big Mac meal and Coke. And I laughed and I said to her, do you know the funniest thing is? That is exactly what Katie Taylor wanted when she won her gold medal in twenty twelve. It's it's amazing how so many things change and so many things stay the same, but just, you know, having the crack with her and sitting on the bus, we went through the whole soundtrack of The Lion King, having a sing song on the bus, but those moments are are things I'll never forget. And for me, that is really genuinely what makes it all worthwhile. So there's a few things, if you move it on there, Fergal, for I I guess like what what is going to make it work for you? These are a few things to remember, that things that are, I have found important. Maybe some of you will take some of these things away, maybe some of you won't. One thing that Bill O'Hurley, who was one of my idols, always said to me was, read, read all about it. Just read everything you can. Read every single newspaper during the week. I know maybe you don't want to be going out and buying a newspaper subscription to everything that's there, but there's so much available online. And just, you know, podcasts, everything, read, listen, educate yourself. There is nothing that will prepare you more than just having the knowledge in the background so that you can have a recall in the back of your head that if you are chatting on a Sunday afternoon about a match, that you might have read something on a Tuesday and suddenly somebody says something and it comes back to you. The only way that happens is if you just keep reading and like, one of the best things that Bill said to me was that early on, read the newspaper every single day and just that's part of your research. You might not even class that as work. It's just actually being disciplined about reading it every day. Take feedback. Lots of people don't ask for feedback because they actually don't want to hear it. People hate hearing, you didn't do a good job there. I love hearing that I didn't do a good job because it's the only way you're going to get better. I hate watching myself. I hate listening to myself and you might think that's crazy. Like I've been doing this for nearly twenty years, but I absolutely cannot stand the own sight of myself, the hate, the sound of my voice, just don't like it. But I do it because I know that that's what's going to make me better. And if I made a mistake, I need to see it. I need to know. Don't do that again or whatever. And the other thing is be yourself. It's not easy to do that all the time, but like how else are people going to buy into you? Sometimes in sports presenting in particular, it's all about data and numbers and it's not enough about people. The best ones, if you watch, are the ones who are themselves. On TV, on radio, they're the ones who have a bit of crack. Bill O'Hurley, he had it, Marion Fanoukhan had it, Sean O'Rourke had it. There's like lots of brilliant people who aren't themselves and they're not the ones who are successful. They're not the ones who you remember. So always remember to try to be yourself as well. There are a few things to remember. There's a few more if you move on, Fergal again, please. So and push it. She had, so apart from Bill, Marion Fanoukhan to me is the, one of the best presenters we ever had in Ireland. Sadly, she passed away in twenty twenty and I got to know her quite well before she died and she was really good to me as well. She just, I suppose she always had a word of advice and a lot of things, but the one thing that she always said that stayed with me was it takes a lot of homework to sound that relaxed. And it goes back to that point about Bill saying to read. People used to think Marion Fanoukhan only worked on a Saturday and a Sunday afternoon, that she'd just rock up and she'd present this show and she was getting paid fortunes and money to do it or whatever. But actually, she spent the whole week being diligent in her preparation, reading, phoning people, watching everything, so that on a Sunday afternoon, she could absolutely grill somebody without notes in front of her, because she knew it was all in there. So it does take a lot of homework to sound that relaxed. And I'd like to think that for me, that's one of the key things that I think people, I'd like to think that that's what they say about me, that I'm pretty relaxed in my approach and I'm pretty relaxed on air. But it's because the homework is done. So having the confidence in yourself to know that you're fully prepared so that when you go on air, you can be relaxed and you can be yourself is absolutely crucial. There's a few things when it comes to talking to the camera. So the first one here is talk to the living, not the lens. It might sound really simple, but actually pretending that you're talking to a person will make you just sharpen up a little bit. You're not talking to the camera, you're talking to your mom at home or your neighbour or your granny or you know, your old teacher, whoever it is. But remember that even when you're talking to the auto queue, you're actually talking to the to people. And don't forget that, because sometimes when people, they're reading, they look like they're reading. So just remember, you're talking to the living, not the lens. That's something to remember. The next one is the three Cs. This has been something of mine for a very long time. Confidence, care and charisma. So the first one, just being confident that what you're saying, you know, the better you present it, the stronger you are on camera, the more likely people are to believe you. Take care in what you're saying and that it's, you know, factually true, that you're actually forensically, you've checked that what you said is correct. But also that you take the care in the way that you say it, you know, that you're actually articulate and you're speaking at a pace that people can understand. And also just to have that bit of charisma, like I said, that bit of personality goes an awful long way. And then the last one is if there is an opportunity to do something different, take it, because you know, there's, there's, there's going to be loads of other people who want to do the job that you want to do. How do you make yourself stand out? You make yourself stand out by doing something that other people don't. So whether that's having the crack a little bit on air or whether that's something that you are known for, you know, whether in your research and your diligence and how you present yourself, if there's something unique that you can find for you, do it. Because you need to be able to separate yourself from all the other people who want this job that is very, very hard to get. If you move on to the next one there again, Fergal, please. I would always say, never take yourself too seriously. This picture was taken of myself and David Gillik at the Olympics after the four by, or after the four won their rowing medal in Tokyo. So the girls had started wearing these orange hairbands. And I just thought like everyone, it was kind of like cool runnings. It was like everyone in the audience or everyone in the office, we were all kind of buying into it. There was no Irish over there, so anytime we'd go down and watch, we'd all be there with the orange things and it just became a thing. We'd gotten to know the girls, they'd told us the story about how they were their lucky charm. And myself and David just thought, why don't we just go on TV doing this? So when they came back to us live on TV after the girls won their medal, this is the way we were dressed on TV. My boss saw it and I thought he was going to hit the roof, but he was just like, that was brilliant, because you're trying to capture the mood of the nation. So like, this was just something that had happened in an ad break, like we had a minute and a half to prepare, but I found this orange tape and I was like, come on, we'll do this. And it was just like, listen, a bit of crack, but by not taking yourself seriously, you're allowing other people to come in on it and have the crack with you. And that to me is really, really important. So definitely that's one tip that I would say, never take yourself too seriously. It isn't all glamorous, trust me. Again, this is at the Olympics in the lashing rain, in the middle of a thunderstorm, a typhoon hit while we were live on air. Like you can see the front of me there, but the back of me was absolutely soaked. I'm literally standing on a tent. What you would have seen on TV is looking out over this beautiful bridge in Tokyo, but in real life, this is what it looked like. It was crazy. But again, live TV, you just rock and roll with it. So just remember, it ain't all glamour. Some people would think it's fabulous and it, you know, and it is most of the time, but it it's not glamorous all the time, that is for sure. And then there are loads of jobs, loads of jobs. So, okay, maybe you don't all want to do what I do. Maybe sometimes some of you might want to be a commentator. And again, it's the same skill set where live television, being able to say it as you see it, being articulate, being able to to use your words to say what people are seeing is an incredible skill, not something that I've tried, but I do think it is one of the greatest skills to be able to have, doing live commentary. There's things like, you know, being a floor manager, that's the person who's responsible for everything that happens, telling everybody when they're coming on camera, when the analysis is rolling and all that kind of stuff. The sub editors, I did this job for years where basically you're cutting all the analysis, all the closers, the teasers, all that stuff. It's a huge job. The broadcast coordinator is responsible for all the timings on the show. They'll tell you, you've only got a minute left, two minutes left. They're the ones who have to time out the whole show to make sure that we hit kickoff and commercial breaks at the right time. There's graphics coordinators, people who put up everything that you see on your screen, they're responsible for that. There's obviously the people who run the cameras, sound and lighting, there's somebody running the auto queue. There's a researcher who puts together the packs during the week and that might be just researching the game and putting together all the stats and analysis to give to the pundits on match day so that if they need to check how many tries has Hugo Keenan scored for Ireland, they can just open this pack and see it and that they don't have to go Googling frantically during a game. And then there's a runner, which I'll talk to you about about this in a second, but this to me is one of the best entry level positions that you can get in RTE. They're always looking for them and it's a brilliant, brilliant place to start. You might think, oh, I don't want to go in there making tea for somebody. It's about so much more than that. And and trust me, there's a land of opportunity awaiting. So if you just move on. Again, Fergal there, please. I would say two of the, I suppose, one of the most important people that you should put into your contacts book is Paula Fahy. So Paula Fahy is the commissioning editor in RTE Sport and she is the woman who is responsible for all of the jobs in production in RTE Sport. I mentioned runners. Paula, you know, even if you email her and say, listen, I'll do anything. I I want to help out as a, you know, a sub editor, a runner, a researcher or whatever. We've got a summer this year where we've got GAA championship with like so many live games. It's actually not even thinkable how we're going to do it. We've got a women's World Cup, we've got a rugby World Cup. And that's not to mention all the stuff that we just do every year. There's athletics, European championships, you know, there's just so much that happens. And Paula is always looking for staff. My email is there as well. What I would say is feel free to reach out and say, look, I'm in Dublin, can we grab a coffee? Or here's my CV, can you have a look over it or whatever? Because the land of opportunity starts with summers generally. Summers to me are the best time to reach out and see where the jobs are. And you might think, oh, sure, I'd never get into RTE, but actually, to be honest, you'd be really surprised. They're always looking for people. And in particular, because I have an involvement in this course and Fergal as well has a good relationship with RTE. It is a really good place to start to reach out this summer and say, look, I'd love to be considered for any of these positions. So I would make a note of those emails and and feel free to reach out to me, but definitely to send a CV to Paula as well. I would highly recommend that you do that if you're looking for work in the summer. So, look, there's just a few bits and bobs. I'm happy to chat through anything or anything in there that you're interested in or not. Or if there's anything you want to ask me, just feel free to ask me absolutely anything. I'm total open door, so anything you want at all.
Okay. Hang on a sec. I'll stop sharing there. Thank you, Jackie. And sorry, is my mic kind of bouncing back to me there? Just again, folks, what an exemplar of being on point and kind of forensic in terms of the detail and how how she goes about her business. Forty-five minutes on on the button. I've ever seen that. I, yeah, honestly, I'm, yeah, I'm pretty awestruck by that. And and the slide game, absolutely impeccable as ever. So thank you so much for that, Jackie. Loads of good advice. Can I, can I ask you all as many as you, as possible, just to turn on the cameras then and and questions, observations? Again, your TV news days, again, Jackie, a lot of people having their first experience of presenting as sports editor and things like that, where we're kind of recreating a short live bulletin. So I'm hoping there are a few questions for for Jackie relating to stuff like that or or just in general, relating to anything that she's talked about there. Would would be great. There's nothing to fear.
Yeah, yes, anything you want. There's no stress, anything at all.
Hang on. So I see Erin there has the hand up. Erin, can you put on the camera and and jump in with the question there?
Yeah. So I was just going to ask Jackie, I wasn't here for the first five minutes, but what course did you actually do in the beginning?
So I did media and communications and English in Mary I. I did it because it was, look, it was just really practical and I wanted to do, I had applied for DCU Communications was my second choice and I was actually thinking that would be good as well, because it's obviously quite practical, but the one in Mary I was recommended to me because it was really practical. This course in UL wasn't there. I'm way older than all of you guys. So this course wasn't in production when I was in college. So, but I absolutely would have, if it was in, it actually came into UL, I think, when I was in fourth year. So I would have definitely been, and I played basketball in UL, so I spent more time in UL than I did in Mary I, I think. So it would have much more suited me to be over there, but yeah.
But but yeah, it is a very solid course in Mary I and it it still is, but 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 thanks for the kind words there, Jackie. She on point, on point, on message. Thanks. Okay, anyone else want to come in there? Sorry, who's that on the, I'd say a hand up, is that Erin? Who else? I see Si Redmond there as our sports editor. Sorry to put you on the spot, Si, but there you go. Joe is, Si, was there anything you wanted to come in with before we get to Sean and Joe? Si, Si. No, okay, we'll go to Joe. Joe, Joe, question?
Jackie, thanks for the talk, but you mentioned there are all those RTE sport positions, but if you were our age now looking to get into sports presenting, is there anything practical you'd recommend doing like or something just to get you out there a bit more?
Yeah, totally. Good question, Joe. Firstly, I would, where do you live?
Dingle, Kerry.
Okay. Do you know any of the people working in Kerry Radio?
A few, but not too many. I know a few in like Radio on the Gaeltic do and stuff.
Okay, good. Because like, I suppose when I, I'm from Cork, right? And like we had loads of local radio in Cork. Paulie Palmer, who sadly passed away, was a brilliant mentor to me. And there's people like that in local radio who, if you just reach out to them on social media and say, Harry, any chance I could come to a match with you? And just observe what you do. Most of them are actually brilliant at doing that, like Paulie would have been really good to me when I just, I just wanted to learn, what does he do when he goes to a match? Because like in my head, I think, okay, sure, everyone would see that now, but actually it's very hard to get that experience unless you go and do those things. So I would say if there's any of those connections that you have in Radio on the Gaeltic or Kerry Radio or anything like that, I would definitely start with them and ask if there's even just a chance that you could just see them on match day. Or even come into the studio. They they are generally quite open to that. The other thing is, I suppose broadcasting yourself, like that is, you know, it's it's very hard to make the initial breakthrough, but what I do see now is a lot of social media stuff where people are creating their own podcasts or their own content online and just being diligent about actually practicing writing match reports and broadcasting match reports. And I do think that's a good way of doing it. And then lastly, I think it's just putting yourself out there in terms of trying to go for those jobs. Like you might genuinely think, Joe, sure, I haven't a chance of getting a job in RTE, but all of those jobs, like a runner, are entry level positions and they they want them to be filled by people who want to work in the industry. So it's not like there's people, I mean, we do have some runners in RTE who don't give a shit about doing that job. Like they, they're just there because it's in, it's easy money and they know somebody in RTE and whatever. But really in the sports department, what they're trying to do is bring in people who really want to have a long career in here. And like even last summer, three runners who were working last summer on sport are now working as sub editors in the department. So it is a real, there is a real opportunity there. And that's why I say, I don't say flippantly, oh, sure, email this woman. Like I've spoken to Fergal about this. I I do genuinely think reaching out to me and reaching out to Paula and putting yourself out there for any kind of job is is really, really worthwhile. So but I definitely, on the local radio thing, to me, I still think that's, that is the best entry level position. But I I I really would reach out to people in RTE as well, for sure.
Perfect, thanks.
And everywhere else as well, by the way. Today FM, News Talk, Spin, everything, like there's any number of them and I would reach out to any and all of them too.
Great. We've got Sean is up next and I think Liam after that. Okay, so Sean, shoot.
Hi Jackie, how are things?
Hey Sean, how are you?
Not too bad at all now. Just a kind of a quick one for you there. Just kind of a two-part question, just based on kind of like RTE picking their presenters. Just kind of a two-part question, just based on kind of like RTE picking their presenters. Obviously like you have a wide knowledge of sport and kind of like different sports. And obviously that's given you the chance to, you know, obviously present a lot of different things, especially the Olympics being a big one, but like, how important is it to have a good sporting knowledge and to help yourself progress within like sports broadcasting?
Yeah, look, it's huge. And the one thing that I would say to all of you guys, if you do want to be in sport, don't pigeonhole yourself into just one sport because for me, certainly when I started out, GAA would have been my bag and I would have liked, I mean, that, I think it's pretty well known now. I really wanted the Sunday game and obviously didn't get it. And that's where I was aiming when I started out. I thought, Sunday game, let's go full throttle at that. But like, I would have been a huge rugby fan and a huge football fan, but never thought I'd be presenting either of them. Like, and then the Olympics is just something like, I love the Olympics. I've always loved the Olympics. I wanted to go to the Olympics. And then obviously that didn't work out. So that was a, a really cool thing to be able to navigate. But I guess it's just been about being able to say, okay, well, if that didn't work out, I can jump over here. Like when they asked me to present the rugby, I was like, rugby, brilliant. Yeah. Okay. I'd love to, but I never thought it was coming. So I guess it's just being able to be versatile enough that they know that you're a live option for that. Because if they thought I didn't know anything about rugby, there's no way they could have put me in there. So certainly when I would say starting out, when I talk about reading and all the things that Bill O'Hurley would have taught me, like he presented football on RTE. But like, he was a huge Ga fan, like loved it, like he loved rugby, loved horse racing. And like same with like, let's say Tony O'Donoghue is the soccer correspondent in RTE. But like, he's a GAA man, you know what I mean? So like people kind of put you into a hole because that's into a pigeonhole because that's who they think you are. Like I'm like Mrs Rugby now, whereas you know, clearly I obviously have a great draw for the GAA and, and will have that now during the Sunday game as well. But I think it's just being able to be versatile is definitely what's going to employ you more. And by the way, I would say that doesn't just come to presenting. If you can shoot and edit and produce, you're way more employable than a person who can just stand in front of a camera and talk as well. So like, if you can, like in RTE in particular, they're, they're mad hiring multimedia journalists. That's what they're hiring the most. So it's people who can shoot, edit, produce, write for the website. And like who can do it on a, on a phone. So if you can get a mojo kit and you can really equip yourself to do that. And I know when you're doing your news packaging, that will be an element of it as well. But I do think that kind of stuff, the more skilled you can be in a wide range of areas across sports, but also in terms of production, definitely the, the, the right way to go about it. And you might think, oh, Jesus, I'll be a jack of all trades. But actually Sean, that's probably your best route.
No, that's perfect. Thanks a million, Jackie.
No worries.
So I think Liam, Liam, Liam O'Rourke was, wanted to come in there.
Yeah. Thanks Fergal and thanks Jackie for the presentation. I thought it was really beneficial. Like, just like a question that's kind of twofold, like one thing that like really stood out to me, and I've heard commentators even mention it, that, that the voice is in your ear. So like, you're really well prepared, you know, you have your research done, you're, you're comfortable maybe in the position, but all the producers in the back room in your ear, I'd say like, that must take a lot of time to get used to. And just secondly, like from local radio, you get a good background and obviously with all the other stuff you've done as well, you, you, you feel that you're improving in your own mind as you, as you grow up the ladder. But I'd still, like, is there any advice you'd give someone who maybe is going from one media organisation to a big player like RTE, like be it a runner or a presenter? I'd say that's really, really intimidating. So was it difficult to, to get, to get confident in that environment?
Oh, Jesus. Yeah. Like God, there's loads in it. Well, like firstly, on the people talking in your ear, like I really mean this when I say it, Liam, the only way you can get used to it is to have it happen all the time. Like, so let's say when I was presenting Sunday sport on the radio, I would only have Barry O'Neill, who produces Sunday sport in my ear. And all he, but, but he could be giving me scores, like I could be talking to somebody and he'll go Dublin two fourteen, Derry two sixteen. And I'm writing it down and trying to talk and whatever. And the only way you can get used to that is just the sheer volume of it coming at you. So that's definitely something. And sports shows are brilliant at that because it, you know, you do have to be particularly diligent about. And if you have to say, sorry, I missed that. Can you give it again? People are grand with that. In the newsroom, if you ever watch the six o'clock news, it's open talkback. So I can hear every single person in the gallery, not just the producer of the programme. I can hear the director, I can hear the graphics coordinator. I can hear the editor of the programme and they're all talking. And when it comes to the sports news, lots of them don't give a shit about it. So they're all talking about what they had for dinner and to be able to block it out so that you don't accidentally say that on television because that's the hardest part of it for sure. But look, just pure flying hours is what's going to get you used to that. And after a while, you just block it out. Half the time now, I actually don't even hear it. I just, I, I can listen for the crucial stuff. And then in terms of, I think that's a really key point about moving from one organisation to the other. Because let's just say if you're working in local radio and everybody knows your name, it's like cheers, you feel like you're really part of the community. And then you go to somewhere like RTE and you're trying to stand out. One thing that I often say, and I try not to, you don't want to like big brother the runners or anything like that, but equally we've all been that person and you're trying desperately to stand out. So I would say if you do ever find yourself in that situation, two quick things that I would say. First of all, if you are in a bottom of the food chain job, and I hate calling it, that's what it is, but just like for the purposes of this, let's just say you're there, you're as a runner. Come in. If you ever walk into a studio, know who you're dealing with, right? So if it's the floor manager and the floor manager is the person who's in charge of the, the studio, find out what their name is. Go and talk to them, say hello, introduce yourself. This all sounds really basic, but you would be surprised how many people don't do this. Go into an organisation and get to know the key people who are really important. And that is the person who's in charge of the floor, the person who's in charge of the department and the presenter of the programme and the, the pundits who are, who you're going to be dealing with. So when you go in, say hello to them by name, ask them if they need anything, ask them how you can help them. Because chances are, if they remember your name, they're going to talk about you. And that's what's going to get somebody saying, like I mentioned those few runners last year who are now all working as sub editors. It's because everybody liked them. It's because people thought, oh, they had a great attitude. He was lovely, she was lovely. They've got a real spark. The people who don't bother their arse and they think, oh, fuck this, I don't want to be making somebody tea. They're not going to get anywhere. But like, I, when I was doing my internship and when I was working in those kind of jobs, I went out of my way to do anything extra that I could. And I think, I would like to think that that's probably the reason why I do now what I do, because people liked me and people thought, geez, your one is hardworking and she's sound. And so I would say that that is really, really important. Those small differences can actually make a huge change in your career, in how you treat people. But it starts with getting to know the right people and making sure that you make an impression so that people remember what your name is. Cause that's the most important thing, that people know who you are, not that you know who they are, but you really want them to remember you too.
Thanks, Jackie.
No worries.
Okay, some good pointed observations there. Just one, one person before we finish up there. Si is going to come in. So Si is our sports editor for the, for one of the news days next week and has a, a, a good profile already built up, I think, around her kind of sports reporting and stuff like that. So Si, where are you going to come in there?
Thanks Fergal and thanks Jackie for that. It was a really great presentation. I guess kind of from my perspective, I know it's kind of a question that's asked a lot, but how difficult is it to be like breakthrough as a woman journalist? I know sometimes it's not very well like broadcast. So like there will be more males than females on the screen. How difficult is that or how difficult it was for you?
Yeah, well, the good news is Si, it's changing a lot. Like when I started, I was one of probably thirty people in a press conference and there would be one woman. Now I go in and there's probably five, which is still small, but it's definitely improving. And I think people are much more used to seeing women, particularly if you turn on RTE now, like Joanne's presenting the GAA, I'm doing the rugby. Ivan is on it an awful lot, Marie Crow, Sine Cassan before she went to the newspapers. So there's much more females, I think, presenting live sport, even on the BBC, like between Gabby Logan and Claire Balding, there's, there's just so many more present. And I do think that that makes a big difference because it means people are moving with it. I mean, I, I just think we need to move even beyond gender now that we're actually representing society more, that it's not just like previously it might have just been a man, a middle aged man i- in studio. Now there's a good chance it's a middle aged man or woman, but I do think we need to be at a level where it's more representative society. Like we've got a hugely multicultural society in Ireland, but we don't represent that on TV much either. So I, I think things are probably moving in the right direction, but it's still slow. From my point of view, what I would say is it was challenging at the start because there was a certain generation and type of people who maybe didn't want a young twenty-five-year-old upstart woman presenting an iconic radio show. But largely over the years, it's actually amazing to see how people just get used to something and they just, they don't see it as any different now. And they would be as likely to challenge me about something I said as to, you know, who I am, which I, I'd much prefer. I love having chats with particularly men in their sixties and seventies who previously maybe might have thought there was no place for somebody like me. Now I would find that they're the ones I actually have the best chats with at matches. They'd often come over and have the chats and be really keen to know what, what are we doing here or what do we think of that? And I love that because it does mean that the generation has definitely changed. So I'd hope for you guys coming through and I'd hope that that's your experience, that you see much more women and that it's much more accepting. But I mean, I'd gladly hear it if it's not because I, I think if it isn't, then we definitely have a job, more work to do.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks so much. Great answer there. And yeah, Jackie, thanks as ever, so much for, for, for the time. There's so much there, I think, for you, for, for you guys to, to ponder and, and to take on board. I will share those slides because again, there's, there's a lot of detail there and you know, pay attention to, to, to the stuff that she's saying because she's, she's really laying it out in a way that a, a, a lot of people are slow to do when, you know, a, a lot of people, Jackie, when they're in the big jobs, they kind of forget about the, you know, they, they literally forget about what, what, what it's like kind of at the bottom rung. So you're, you're you're, you're great to kind of keep in, in touch with that aspect. And yeah, so that's, I, I think that's really, really helpful. And so like I said, I'll share the slides and I'll, the, the, the session's recorded, I'll share it as well for people who want to watch back. And just, yeah, thanks as ever for your time, Jackie. Really enjoyed that session and I think, I think everybody here did also. Okay?
No worries. Thanks a million. And look, just lastly, before I go, I know I'm planning to come down in person. I need to just work out a date with you on that, Fergal, which we will do. But so like when we come down, I'll, I'll maybe just ask Fergal what it is you guys want to do. So if there is like practical things that you're like, listen, I'd really like you to help us work on X, Y, Z. Feel free to give me feedback of what, and I'll build something out that works for you guys, rather than me coming down and going, here, I think you really want to know this. You might be like, I really want to work on X, Y, Z. So feel free to give that feedback to me and to Fergal and we'll build out a course that works for you. And then secondly, do please feel free to send an email. I know you might think, oh, sure. Why would you bother? But actually, if you are going to be in Dublin or you're up and you want to grab a coffee, you want to come and say hi or whatever, please feel free to do that. I like Fergal will tell you, I am really genuinely open to this and like, we're all going to be working in this industry together. So if I can give you a hand or a help in this, I absolutely will. So just drop me an email. Fergal has shared my email there. It's on the slides as well. It's just Jackie.hurley@rtie.ie. Please feel free to send me an email, but I would also really encourage you, get your CV together and send it to Paula Fahy and tell her that you're willing to do any and every job that she has available this summer. You never know where that's going to take you. So keep in touch and hopefully I'll see loads of you soon.
Thanks again, Jackie. Thanks everybody for joining. Okay.
Cheers guys. Take care. See you later.
Bye bye.